Children or grandchildren part of the Manchester Community Schools. This is all new territory for us and we are just trying to figure out the legal precedents surrounding this subject. There are also many things that we are taking into consideration, which is what other school systems are doing and what other comments that we have from our community members. We do not have all the answers, so please don't think that we do, but I believe that with your help, we can learn, we can listen to others' concerns, and we can develop positive outcomes based on information that will be disseminated at that board meeting next week. Please be aware that we have a process in place for students to work with counselors and principals if they consider themselves to identify with the opposite gender of their biological sex. Students who do not go through this process and choose to use a restroom other than the one that matches their biological sex will be disciplined. When I first arrived at Manchester in June, the one thing I heard repeatedly, over and over again, was just how supportive this community is. And what I'm asking you to do is to step up and come together to show your caring and compassionate traits, especially in adversarial times. It is times like this that make us stronger. Thank you for caring enough to be positive and informed communicators that support all students. Again, we will not be taking any public comments tonight regarding restroom or transgender concerns. Please join us next Wednesday so we can truly take the time to listen to your concerns. Thank you.
So with that, we always begin our meeting with hearing of patrons. All right then, the first order of business are consent items. So we have those and we usually approve consent items as a group, and we would like to highlight the donations, which we typically read, just to acknowledge just the generosity that we have to our school. And so I will be reading the donations. There's a donation of $1,620 to MES for preschool tuition costs from the Community Foundation of Wabash County. A donation of $10 to the Manchester Junior/Senior High School Girls Basketball Program from an anonymous donor. A donation of $400 to the Manchester Junior/Senior High School Principal Fund from the PTO of Manchester Community Schools. A donation of $500 to the Junior/Senior High School Library Fund from the PTO. A donation of $350 to the Manchester Junior/Senior High School Fax Fund from Walmart. Donation of $500 to the Manchester Junior/Senior High School Band Program from an anonymous donor. A donation of $500 to the Manchester Junior/Senior High School Science Olympiad Program from an anonymous donor. A donation of $500 to the Manchester Junior/Senior High School Choir Program from an anonymous donor. A donation of $4,000 to the Manchester Junior/Senior High School Wrestling Program from Manchester Athletic Booster Club. And a donation of $500 to the Manchester Junior/Senior High School Cheerleading Program from the Manchester Athletic Booster Club. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So may.
There's a motion from Mr. Flack. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second from Mr. Espisette. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Thank you. All right then, we have some things for recommendations for approval. The first is the contract with Barton Co-Vilma Architects and Engineers.
As we brought this to you last month, we went back and had them add the boilers as a possible spec with this contract. All of you had that. I don't know if there's any questions on that at this time from the board. But again, seeking approval for them to be our architects with the primary focus on replacing the roof on this building here this spring/summer.
I make a motion to approve the contract with Barton Co-Vilma to include the roof in the boilers.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Rock, paper, scissors. There's a motion by Mr. Turflinger and a second by Mr. Shaw. Do we have any discussion?
For clarification, the rest of that money then is purpose towards boilers if we go that route.
All those in favor?
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. All right, we have two second readings. Can we do those together or do they need to be separate?
I'd say do them separately.
Okay, so we'll have two separate, two different motions. So I'm looking for a motion for the approval of policy 52-100, Animals in the Classroom.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second from Mr. Bedkey. Do we have any discussion?
I would just comment that I would like to see that other policy regarding how we're going to handle animals on the rest of the school property.
And we did put it on the list. It's just at the bottom of the list because we have so many of them that we have to get in there.
Understood.
Any other discussion? All right then, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. And then I'm looking for a motion for approval of policy 70-10, the Vehicle Idling Policy.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Espisette. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Mr. Flack. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries six one. Thank you. All right, and then that brings us to discussion information. So we're going to begin with policy 32-100, Training and Health Precautions for Communicable Diseases. This is a first reading.
Yes, and this just really has to do with any of our employees that come in contact with blood and that we have to train them on a yearly basis on how to do that safely.
Do we have any discussion about this?
Who does the training?
We actually do that now through Safe Schools. It's an online program module that they have to go through and listen to videos and then take a test to be able to pass that. And if they don't get at least 85%, they have to try again and retake that training. So our office is responsible for all of that and pushing that out. So, and that could change based on who's in the office, so we didn't want to tag it to one specific person, but ultimately, I'm responsible for all of that.
Are there underlying documents to this policy at all?
There is not.
Okay.
Are you talking about administrative guidelines?
Yep.
Yeah, there is not.
And those who would be trained would be what, administrators or?
It's actually all employees. Yes.
Is there similar training for CPR and first aid or?
CPR and first aid have to be taken if you want to renew your teaching license, so that is available. But do we do that across the board? I don't believe that one was on the list as a required training, but it's not something that we couldn't put in there, but we have a list that is quite significant. So that would be my only concern, is putting that in there, so.
Yeah, I don't want to sidetrack what we're doing right now, but it's just more of a curiosity.
Yeah, all teachers are trained in that, though.
Does that include the training IDAEDs?
It does, yes.
Is everybody satisfied to send this through to a second reading next month? Sounds good. Okay. Then we're going to look at policy 52-10, the Children's Internet Protection.
Yes, and this one was written by Mr. Miller. Would you like to speak a little bit on it?
The Children's Internet Protection Act was something produced by the government several years ago. We receive funding, E-rate funding, which covers about 80% of our internet cost, which is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 to $60,000 a year. And in order to qualify for that, we need to have a policy in place that helps protect the children against, as much as we can, on offensible items. Very vague on what's offensible, and they really don't tell us how to do it, but we do need to make attempts to do so. So be happy to answer any specific questions.
Any questions or discussion?
Well, I would make our own definition in that case, right? Some type of operational definition of it's vague.
Does this have anything to do with the Securely contract? I mean, do they monitor?
Part of Securely is our web filter, okay? So yes. It does not unfortunately at this point in time pay for that contract. It only pays for the actual internet access.
Are we pleased to send this through next month as a second reading? Yeah, sounds good, great. Those of you who are by the door, there are several chairs on this side of the room. Feel free to come in and have a seat. All right then, we're doing a first reading of policy 55-20, the Least Restrictive Environment.
This policy is actually to protect our special education students and make sure that they are in an environment that is conducive to their learning, and it is required by all school corporations.
Do we have discussions or questions about this? Sounds good as written?
Sounds good.
All right then, let's take a look at policy 62-20, Purchases of Supplies and Materials, and also there's administrative guidelines with this one.
Yes, we brought this before, and we're bringing it back as written with purchase of supplies and materials. The only change that we did is we added administrative guidelines to make sure we have written our procedures that between $25,000 and $50,000 that we will seek quotes or bids in non-emergency situations.
Discussion or questions on this policy?
I think it's just to make it clear, it's not about spending, when it's right. It's about price competition, basically competitive to our spending, so.
And this is a first reading still then?
We brought back as a first reading simply because we added the administrative guidelines so that they could go together.
I would, I mean, basically, I like the idea behind the administrative guideline. I guess I'm a little confused by, to me, it seems like we would always want to search for the best value, not just over $25,000. To me, the distinction of $25,000 would be that it's required to get multiple bids.
And we had $20,000 thrown out and $30,000, and when we sat in the committee, we just met in the middle and went 25, so that's how that number came up.
Right, no, that, I'm not, the number itself is fine with me. It's the wording is a little strange to me that it almost reads like below $25,000, we're not looking for the best value.
We'll always look for the best value.
Well, yeah, I would think so. I'm sure we do. Just would think we would, you know what I mean? I don't know if that could be rewritten in any way to, because I mean, when I, that's not up there, but the guideline itself to me reads.
Yeah, that's the policy.
I mean, the first sentence there is, is fine, but we would also look for the best value under 25, wouldn't we?
I feel like it says that in the policy. If you bring that policy back up in the second paragraph, and at the end of that, you see the second, for purchases of supplies and materials under $50,000, they're at the end, for the best value and price without soliciting bids, but you know, for the best value and price. Is that what you're saying, or is it something different?
You're talking about the last sentence of the second paragraph?
The only sentence in the second paragraph.
Oh. Yeah, I guess it does say, kind of say it there, it's just the guideline itself, I think, is a little strangely worded. Also, I would, I would ask that we add maybe multiple bids in there, again, back on the guideline.
Competitive quotes.
Well, we can take it back to the committee and they can make a determination and bring it back.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I mean, I don't think you need to tie down a number or anything, but it would make it to be clear that it's more than one bid.
Okay, we can take it back to committee. We actually have an additional person with it now, right?
Roger, you said you wouldn't tie it to a number?
I don't think it has to be.
It does say plural bids, proposals, and quotes, so.
Yeah, so multiple would be, make that a little more clear, I think.
And the policy says that it has to be from at least three suppliers.
That's over 50, right?
Yeah, you're correct.
Yeah, so I'm talking about from 25 to 50.
So we'll just use the same wording we do in the policy as the AG and then?
It's fine, we can do that.
Anything else for that policy?
Just remember, you will not always get three bids, because there's going to be certain situations where you're not going to have enough suppliers to accommodate that, so just know that ahead of time.
That's true.
Yeah, that's why I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily have to say, say that it has to be three bids, but I think more than one is.
Since I'm on the committee, I think what you're saying is just kind of make the two sync up better, use the same verbiage in both the guideline and the policy and not tie it to a number.
Not tie it to a specific number of bids, right? I mean, yeah, but I would just, to me, again, it's, are we talking about bids meaning different, different ti, it's just not quite clear to me, that's all, that we're saying more than one bid.
Okay.
I assume that's the, that was the intention, right? More than one bid?
Mm-hmm. That's why it says bids.
Okay.
Plural of them, yeah.
I guess that's why.
At least to solicit them, and then if you don't get them, you don't.
Right, yeah, it's not, doesn't even say you have to receive them, really, just at least we tried.
Okay.
Anything else? All right. Then for the highlight of the night, we have an exchange student presentation.
We need to update it. Wait, we need to update it. Hey, Tony, we need to update it. Okay. Okay, well, thank you for coming. These are the four exchange students that we have at our high school right now, and I'm their coordinator, Carol Collett. I also teach fifth grade at Manchester Intermediate School. So this is Lisa from France, Bunjar from Germany, Leo from Germany, and Albin from Norway. And so they've prepared a thank you presentation. First of all, we're very thankful to the school board for the openness. It's, it's been quite a few years trying to build relationships and build the program and provide some culture for, from other countries for our town. And so anyway, they prepared a little presentation just comparing and contrasting their culture with our culture. So I'll turn it over to them.
So we're going to like compare the difference between the USA and Europe. So first, we are from three different countries in Europe, so it may be different like between France and Germany and Norway, but like we kind of chose something that were the same in Europe. So about school, we have a few things. So like here, you have the days, like the school days, or like no breaks, just like class all day and one short break for lunch. And in Europe, we have like more breaks of, it's often 15 minutes, I don't know, in other countries. So like, and also something that is, like that surprised me, is that you have the same schedule every day, you have like the same subjects. And like in Europe, we have different subjects and like we have more different subjects, but we can't really choose them. So I don't know if that's the same thing, okay, so like we can, so like we can choose. So like for most of the subjects, everyone has to take them, maybe we have a few of them we can choose, but here like you can just make, choose everything you can, like everything you want in Europe. So it's different, and you have, so but in Europe, we have different, like more different subjects. So like this is one from Germany, I think, yeah, it's written in German. So, so we can see they have like a lot of different subjects, and so here you change every semester, I think. So, so you can have a lot of different subjects, but it's like every day for a semester or a year, you like learn about a subject and then about something else. In Europe, it's just like sometimes once a week, sometimes twice or three times a week, but like it's all year like this, and sometimes for several years, you can change your subject. So also to go to school, here it's like yellow bus and our parents who takes people, like students, to school. In Europe, I feel like it's more students who go to school like without the parents by themselves, so like with the public transportation, sometimes we have to walk to the bus or like subway, train, I don't know, and to go to school. So that's different. And also in here, you have all the sports and music, everything is at school. We'd like, the students don't do a lot of things outside of schools. It's a lot like everything is like the music teacher and all the clubs are at school. In Europe, it's going to be like for school, it's a different, for music, it's a different school, and for sports, you have to find a club outside of school most of the time. Also, you can bring the backpack with you here, so I think it's for security, I think. I don't know. Like in Europe, we can keep the backpack with us in the classes, like even we have to, I don't know, but like it's what we do. So it's, I think it's more practical to like carry all the books and everything. And also, I think the, like the level is easier here, but I'm not sure, and like the quizzes and everything are easier, like you have true, false, and matching and things like that. So it's, I feel like you can just go and try, and if you're lucky, you get it. In, in Europe, I feel like we have to like write a lot more like of long answers and to remember a lot of things. And also, like the relationship we have with teachers, like the first day I came here, it was like sometimes students hug teachers or like the teachers come and do the first class is just a presentation about themselves, like, so this is my family, I have like three kids and their name, their ages, like, and in Europe, that doesn't happen at all, like the teacher is like, like there is a distance between the teacher and the students. And so I think that's a good point for American school, because like it's nice to have really, to be closer to your teachers and to have more discussion, discussion between like you, you can speak and ask more questions. Like we ask questions in Europe, obviously, but it's more like distance, I feel.
This page kind of shows you what's different about food in the US and in Europe, so, but of course, it's school food. It can be different in every country, of course, so, yeah, I don't know, how about, in the US, there's like less variety, so it kind of is like every other week, it's always the same again. And in Europe, it's like, it doesn't repeat that often, so you kind of have more options, and you, you probably leave the school most of the times, even if you get older, so if you go into high school, you basically leave the school every day to eat, so that's why you have more options, because you can just go in the city and, yeah, look for whatever you want to eat. In the US, people eat more fast food than in Germany, maybe, or also in other European countries. People in Europe would rather eat like healthier snacks than going to the next McDonald's or somewhere else, yeah. But in the US, it's also different. They snack more, so they eat like little meals, and in Europe, we would, yeah, we eat like three big meals and that's all, maybe an apple between those, but not like, here it's like more like when you get hungry, you eat a little bit and then you wait till you get hungry again and eat like a little bit. So the amount is the same at the end of the day, it's just a different way of like eating. Yeah.
So next, next is the free time. Like Lisa said, you have school teams here, that means everybody, that means you have practice every day, maybe on Saturdays too. Because we have club sports, we don't have practice every day, we have some rest ways, rest days between them. We usually have practice three times or four times a week. Yeah, because every school, because there are so many school teams, there's some, there are a lot of more sport events where you usually go with your family, and yeah, we don't have those in Europe. We just have, you know, the family just goes to, just go to the sport event, sport events of their kids when they're playing a club. So we do more family activities that has nothing to do with sport. Then in the USA, stores are open every day. In Germany, they close on Sundays. It's, I don't know why it's just like that. In the USA, people work longer, sometimes they work 14 hours a day or more, less, I don't know. But in Germany, you have maximum hours, you can work. I, you, yeah, you're allowed to work in a week. So you're not allowed to work longer than this. And of course, the laws. People can start driving here with twenty, uh, with sixteen. Yeah, but can drink, can buy alcohol when they're twenty-one. In Germany, it's different. You can drive when you're eighteen. You can, sometimes you can start your license when you're seventeen. But yeah, and drinking is, you can, your, your parents can hold if you're, your parents, when your parents are okay with that, you can drive. We can drink when you're fourteen, so yeah. And of course, the national pride, that's a very big thing here in the US. And we don't have this in Germany.
So here are some similarities we have thought of. So in Europe and here, we are, we see a lot of the support you get from your family. Especially our families, we have gotten a lot of support from them. They're, they're at every single sporting event and band event for Lisa. And shopping is something I think everyone, most people love. My, my whole family is not very, doesn't enjoy that, that much, but I really love shopping. Yeah. And a huge surprise I found out about was that, I don't, I'm not sure if it's every year, but this year, you had the break on Black Friday. Is it like this every year? Yeah. In Nor, in, in Europe, I think, you go to school on Black Friday. So that's not a thing. The, this year is the first year I've gone out shopping on Black Friday because I was at school in Europe. So that's something I have experienced now. Which was, I enjoyed it. It was fun. And holidays, especially now, around Christmas. Here, it's more, you show with decorations a little bit earlier, but we decorate in Europe too. Yeah. It's, it's a time, it's a time of the year where everything is white. I'm sure there was a day or two, there was snowing here, which was really beautiful. And the last thing we thought of was pets. Here, many, many people have pets. It's like that too in Europe. Everyone loves pets, especially dogs and cats. And here are also some pictures. The top one is the Northern Light in Norway. The, the bottom right is, yeah, a castle in Germany. And in the middle on the bottom is the Alps in France. And beautiful landscape in the US. So, and again, we are very thankful to be here. We're, we're so happy that this year, we get to walk the graduation, which we appreciate very much. That's something, that's not that big in Europe. And we are, we are also very happy about that we get senior banners for sports, which makes, which makes a difference for us. We feel more appreciation. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions for the students?
I'm sure they're taking questions, especially Albin, he loves them.
And can anyone guess how old Lisa is?
It's a dangerous question.
Her whole family had to go meet her at the airplane because American Airlines wouldn't let her off. She's fourteen. We're hoping she can get back on. And how old Lisa Bunjar is? Fifteen, he's fifteen. And Leo just turned sixteen last Wednesday. And Albin is seventeen. So they come in all ages. Any questions?
Sure, I'm curious. So, so you all speak pretty good English, actually, right? So, so when did you, is that a theme in Europe that you, you know, you have that second language? Is it typically English? And when did you start to learn English? From the start?
Third grade.
Third grade?
In Norway, we start in second grade, learning basic, hello, my name is. And you get, when you go to eighth grade is when you go more deeper into grammar, learning about all the harder grammar.
Like, I use the mic because I'm sick. So like in France, we have to start in like first or second grade, I think. And like how, like as Albin say, like we start to go deeper in probably sixth grade. But like, it's also, I think, something in other countries than like America, especially in Europe, to learn English because like it's the language, like everyone speaks anywhere in the world. So like, I think in other countries, we're more used to learn new languages.
So is English required or do you get to choose your second language?
It's required.
And many of them speak maybe a third or what other languages do you speak besides French and English?
German and Spanish, but not.
Since in, in Europe, since the borders are so close, people usually travel through countries multiple times a year. So I grew up in Norway, but. Yeah, so I grew up in Norway, but my dad is Swedish. So we traveled across, just across the border multiple times a year, usually once a month. So I have grown up speaking three languages, English, Norwegian, and Swedish. So that's.
And British English.
Yeah. So that's something, that's a difference too.
And on your TV is in English. TV is in English?
Some TV, yes. But we have the regional TV. That's what most people watch. But we also have the American shows like on, we have in Norway, I don't know if it's like this in Germany, but Disney Channel. Before eight o'clock, it's in Norwegian, but after eight o'clock, it starts going in English. Just a, just a fact.
Any other questions on the board?
Yeah, what would you say, any of you? What was your biggest surprise that you discovered after spending some time here?
We, we can hear you with the mic.
The biggest surprise actually was that you get refills in restaurants. In Germany, I don't think in every other Europe, yeah, country in Europe, you have to pay every time you get.
Have you ever drank so much pop that you've gotten sick from all the refills? Biggest surprises?
I found out that the, the community in the US is much closer than in Europe. Many people, yeah, as I said, many people travel, so you don't see your community that often. And most times, the schools are, like when you get out of tenth grade, you have to go to attend a new school. So you, some people travel, me, I traveled forty-five minutes every morning to the school I go to or went to last year. And here, you see the people that you go to school with out of the school all the time. So that's a surprise. I wasn't, I didn't see coming, which I like too. It's, you get to know people much better. You see them in church too. Like more people attend church here, which is not very common. Where I'm from, I'm from a big city, so that's not, not a thing that I, I've grown up doing, going to church, which also surprised me, the way you go to church here. It's, I feel like you, there's more life in the church here. I wouldn't say it's, it, uh, there's more activity in church too, like Sunday School, which is interesting, especially when Ruth Ears is the, the Sunday School teacher.
We really appreciate you guys taking the time and all the preparation you did to, to be here. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. All right. Um, then the, now it's time for public comment. Is there any public comment that you would like to offer? Yeah, please go to the, the mic because that's how we get the minutes. Do we ask? All right, I think, also, there's, there's probably going to be a time limit.
That's fine. It's, it won't take long.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Nate Gephardt. I will respect your wishes and not talk about, you know, some things. But there were some other things I'd like to ask. When you guys implement policies that directly affect the general students, is that implemented as a board or is that implemented, you know, by, by, at each school? You know, is that implemented by the superintendent? Big policy decisions that affect everyone in, in the student body?
We actually have a committee that it goes through before it comes to the board. So, and the committee consists, right now, of two board members and myself and Mr. Markham.
Okay, so the committee is made up of board members?
Correct.
They draft a policy?
Actually, most of our policies come through the Indiana School Board Association because they're law. And so we just put them into a policy. That's what our policies are, is law.
I see. My next question is, are there any other policies that have been implemented in the North Matrix School System that we don't know about, that have been done in secret? That the public has not been aware of?
I've only been here since June and I am not aware of any.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
The full board's got to vote on the policy. Once it comes from the committee, full board votes on policy after two readings, just to be specific to your first question, so.
The full board come, comes to vote on the policy, you said? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would also add that our policies are on the school website. You can go up there and click on them and all the board policies are listed there.
Okay.
Except for maybe a few that have just been approved lately. I'm not, I'm not sure how fast they get them up there.
Yeah, we're still working on trying to get that. We're, we're totally changing and revamping how it's shown on the website.
You're changing and revamping policies or?
No, no, no. How it is shown on the website and how you would access it.
Okay.
So right now, you still have the old version of what we're working off of right now. But all of the new policies we've implemented in the last few months are not on there yet.
Okay. So, so you implement policies before you let the public know? Or do you let the public know about the policy and then you implement the policy?
The, go ahead.
It goes through two readings. So, so we've just started going through a lot of the policies because there's a lot, you know, quite a few, you know, a lot of history. So, and policies we don't have. So we've got a policy committee that looks at the initial read. We take, you know, legally, we'll look at that. We come up with basically wordsmith, you know, that everybody agrees upon. We do a first reading, you know, at these meetings. The next month, you know, we may modify that, you know, and we've, we've decided on that. The next month, we'll do a second reading and then we'll take a vote on the policy. So there, there's no hidden agenda, there's no hidden policies, there's no, you know, there may be a little delay, you know, on the, on the website. That's not, that's not intentional or, or anything else. So there's, everything that we do as a board and the policies, you're gonna, the public's gonna see at least two times.
But do you implement it after you notify the public? Or do you just implement it and then come up with a policy after you implement it and people find out about it?
It can't be implemented until it's approved by the board after the second reading.
Okay.
Which is done in public.
Okay.
Every policy is public.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Any other comments? Yeah, please take the mic.
Can I just stand here? I'm not going to take that home. It'll take me a moment.
Yeah. Okay.
Is the idling policy, is that an update from a current policy we have? Because when I drove a school bus, we had an idling policy, but nobody enforced it. I'm wondering if you're going to update this, who's going to be the idling police? Now you're going to enforce that.
Yeah, Ivan Jean does that. And our bus drivers do turn off their buses as long as it's not implement weather where we need to keep our students warm. But for the most part, we have them turned off, sitting out here in the home.
Yeah, but how about the public? I mean, you have more cars.
I'm wondering if you would be willing to come and help us do that because we do not have enough staff members that would walk out there and be able to do. I have done that for many years. Yeah. It's very difficult to monitor, absolutely.
And Larry, we had a discussion last meeting on this that, that went about a half hour and forty minutes. And, and a lot of this, you know, sitting on this board, it's like, like everywhere else. You know, there's things that pop up that people disagree about, you know? And we tend to, you know, we launch at symptom. And, and just like that on the idling policy, my thing would be, you know, we're, you know, it's going to be very hard to go out there and ticket people for not turning off their car. I don't even know if we have the authority to do that. And I know SRO officers don't want to be involved in it. So I think one of the things we need to look at as a community, this board and all together, is what's the solution to these things? So if we got people setting out their idling, the thing is, why are they setting their idling? Not, not going at, you know, putting up more signs, giving people tickets for idling, you know, the enforcement of the policy. But to me, it's getting to root cause and solving what's really going on there. You know, just if you missed that part last meeting, you know, we did have a discussion on that. So I think that's the way we need to address all these things, you know? So, thank you.
This is definitely not my comfort zone. But my question to you is, is there some kind of database or record as to curriculum, instructional materials per grade, per teacher, that is accessible to parents on a regular basis? So that they don't have, that they can go to maybe a webpage or something? Or do you have a resource that offers all of that information so that parents are aware of what is being taught to their children?
Actually, right now, we're in the process of getting a written curriculum. So MES did that last year and eventually we will move to that. We're not there yet, but no, that's where we're moving.
So those specific materials will be available for review for parents prior to that? Or after it's implemented?
You can come and review anything at any time if you ask your principal or your teacher.
So you go specifically to the individual school or teacher only? So if parents have multiple children, there's not a specific database where they can just go and, and find all the information? Easier than trying to do, like sometimes it's easier to research from home. That's why I'm asking.
I, I agree with you.
If there's something that's broader for them to have access to. I didn't know if you actually had something as a school system that is accessible in that way? And apparently, maybe not at this time.
We do not at this time, but we're working our way that direction.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Hi, my name's Jaleen Scarborough, um, I was wondering, Title IX was referenced in the concern letter that was sent out, but is that something that is covered in a student handbook, is it discussed about the first day of class? Like, I currently attend Ivy Tech, we are told first day of class, we are a Title IX school, it covers this, 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 these are the steps that we go through, like, should you talk about domestic violence, or sexual abuse, anything like that? Like, it gets referred off to so-and-so, so if you're, if you discuss that, like, then steps get put into motion. So are, are students informed of that ahead of time, or is that just, like, surprise, it's new?
Well, it's not new, but no, we do not discuss that with our students.
So, say a senior writes a paper on domestic violence and talks about situations, that is not something that you then put steps into motion to have counselors and whatnot readily available to them?
We always have counselors readily available to students if there is a need.
But it's not something that you would specifically pull that student and be like, here's the counselor, you have to talk to them because you've discussed this?
Well, we don't target them for that reason for anything, but, I mean, if a teacher has a concern, they'll certainly share that with the principal or a counselor.
Okay.
Any more comments from the public? All right, then superintendent comments?
Yeah, but, real quick, um, just 'cause I know there are some people that don't have internet access for, like, policies you've got to be putting in place, do you have something in place for those that do not have access to that, to get on the school website or other means of access, that they can access the policies that this board has?
Um, you can always come to our office, and, um, Mrs. Walt can get you any policy you're looking for.
Like myself, that works a full-time job, that, that office isn't going to be open during the day. And if they don't have internet access at home, they're completely unaware of policies, and passed, other than word of mouth by the community.
Right, I, I don't know what to tell you, other than you could phone in and say what policies are specifically.
Or go to the library.
The library has some as well, oh, you mean to get the internet access?
They have free access.
I wasn't following you, I'm sorry. So, yeah. Sure.
Any other public comments? Superintendent comments?
I just, first of all, just wanna say thank you to everyone, 'cause I know you all have concerns, but I just really appreciate you respecting our wishes this evening, and I do wanna invite you to come back next Wednesday, because we do wanna have those conversations, and we wanna hear what you have to say. And we will have people here that will be informing all of us as well, 'cause like I said, we are all learning as well. So, we don't have all the answers, so please don't think that we do, um, I appreciate that. Also, um, board members, just wanna let you know, the poinsettias are for you, from me, and, uh, wish you all a Merry Christmas. I know I won't see you, and all of you are sitting in the off, on, audience as well. Thank you for being here, and, uh, hopefully you guys all have a great Christmas, I know, and hopefully I'll see many of you next week.
Thank you, thank you for the poinsettias.
Welcome.
They're beautiful. A school board comments, Mr. Turflinger.
Okay, the Heartland Career Center is operated by the Manchester Community Schools, Wabash, Peru, MSD of Wabash, North Miami School District, and each school board selects a board member to serve on the Heartland Board, and I happen to do that for our board. We are twenty percent owners of Heartland Career Center, and we receive money from the state for the students attending the Heartland Career Center in addition to the normal state stipend per student to offset costs. Some classes pay at higher reimbursement than others, depending on industry demands. On November twentieth, twenty nineteen, at our Heartland Career Board meeting, the new Precision Ag one and two course description and curriculum were unanimously approved to present to the State Board of Education for their approval. This course will be available for the twenty twenty-one school year if approved at the state level. This is the first time in the state of Indiana that this has ever been, I mean, this is brand new, and it's supposed to be a pilot program for the whole state. Our board at Heartland also approved applying for a seventy-five thousand dollar grant to pay for computers, drones, tools and technology for this class. Mr. Mark Hobbs, the director of Heartland Career Center, has set up a tour at Zimmer Biomet for Dr. Grimo and some of her staff. The tour will be on December sixteenth, and will provide insight on the career path Zimmer is offering to the Heartland Career students. Mr. Hobbs has been at the Heartland Career Center for nineteen years, he was recently selected to serve, uh, let me back up there, Mr. Hobbs is the director, for those of you that don't know, at the Career Center, and he's been there for nineteen years. He was recently selected to serve on Governor Holcomb's Workforce Development Committee Strategic Planning Initiative. Mr. Hobbs' extensive knowledge of pathways to graduation and CTE is of great value to the Heartland Career Board. Mr. Hobbs has offered to make himself available to Manchester Community Schools as we progress through our own strategic plan. The Pathways to Graduation Initiative by the state of Indiana continues to evolve. Heartland is willing to adjust their class times and offerings to allow the five districts who operate the Heartland Career Center more flexibility in scheduling students. I think this is a really kind gesture for him to offer to the students and staff of Manchester Community Schools. That's it. Happy holidays.
Thank you, any other board comments?
Just nice to see everyone, you know, wish every board meeting had this many people, I have to be honest with you, but.
Maybe we should have the exchange students every month.
I think that's what drew the crowd.
I did like their view of our community, though, hope everyone else did too, so.
All right, well then we're adjourned, thank you.